Okay, well, let's call this meeting of the Planning Commission for November fifteenth to order. And we'll do a roll call Cindy.
Mance.
Oh, Aaron, excuse me.
Van Meter.
Here.
Peterson. Crawford.
Here.
Vlacity.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Casper.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, okay, well, now we are going to take a few minutes and as a Planning Commission, welcome our newest member, Mr. Steven Mance. And Steven, we just want you to give us a little bit of scoop on you. For those that don't know you, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thanks Stephanie and Cindy for having the opportunity of joining the Planning Commission. I moved to Sagatuck about three years full time, four years ago when we bought a place. That after we had been visiting here for, gosh, twenty, twenty-five years, like many people, you've came to the area, enjoyed it over the years. And then in two thousand and sixteen, when I sold the business I've been running for over twenty years in Chicago where I did investment consulting. And moved here full time, the first couple of years, we were very active and just trying to renovate and get settled into our home. And then last year, I was thinking that I would like to try to get re-engaged more in the community. Because when I was in Chicago, I was part of our neighborhood community, which was called the Bucktown Neighborhood. And in the Bucktown group, we set up committees that involved the planning as well as the zoning. And then also did a little bit of work with the tax area. And the Bucktown community is about five times larger than the Sagatuck, the entire town of Sagatuck. So when the opportunity came up that there was openings for the Planning Commission, I interviewed. And I had the opportunity with the recent opening to come in and be part of the group. And I really appreciate it because I think that in the city of Sagatuck, there's a lot of things that are happening in the overall metro area. And I know that there's going to be this master plan that will be coming up. Which I think will be very interesting to kind of work with the Sagatuck Township as well as the city of Douglas. Because it seems that there's, we have activity ourselves, but then there's even more activity that takes place within the overall master community. And so I think it's a very good time to be able to join. Unfortunately, it's during two thousand and twenty, we're doing all these by Zoom. And although I'm trying to get used to doing them on the Zooms, it's not nearly as nice as being in person and having a chance to speak to all of you live. But with that, I'll go ahead and let us get back to the meeting.
Thanks so much and welcome. We're glad you're with us.
Thank you.
Hi Steve.
Hi Mike.
Okay, so we need to approve the agenda. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Stephanie, I'll move to approve the agenda if you change the month to October instead of November.
And the year to two thousand and twenty instead of two thousand and eighteen.
You guys are so good. Yeah, that was.
That was wishful thinking if we didn't have COVID back then. That would have been way cool.
We're also two years younger.
I just thought these eyes have been on the agenda for two years. You guys just copied it.
Actually, that's a pretty reasonable assumption.
All right, do we have a second with the amended agenda approval?
Second.
Okay. So do we take a roll call?
Yes. Aaron.
Mance.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Fox. Peterson. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry she's not there. Van Meter.
Yes.
Vlacity.
Yes.
Okay, agenda has been approved, so now we need to approve the minutes from last meeting, September seventeenth. Does anyone have any changes to those or make a motion to approve them as they're written?
I'll make the motion.
And that we approve.
Okay. So one of you could be the first and the other one can be the second. Steve and Marcia.
Oh, I can be the second. That's fine.
Great, all right. Just need a roll call on that then too.
Sorry. Mance.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Peterson. Sorry, Van Meter.
Yes.
Vlacity.
All right, the minutes from the last meeting have been approved, so we'll move on to public comments. On agenda items only, is there anyone wanting to make a public comment today? If so, raise your hands, unmute yourself and let us know where you live and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Anyone?
Stephanie, if I could, this is Aaron. I just, for anybody who joined the meeting after the first minute or two, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that we are expecting our servers to be reinstalled, a new server this evening, and we don't know what time. So Cindy's been made a co-host, but if my internet gets wiped out and my server gets wiped out, you might lose your agenda being projected. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay, and then will we just do everything by our paper notes then? Is that it? There won't be any visual for us?
I will try to do the visual. I have done it once semi-successfully. But we'll have to kind of play it by ear and see what happens.
We're crossing our fingers. The timing just works out well, but we'll see.
All right, so I didn't hear anyone wanting to make public comments, so.
Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry. My name is Janie Goodwin and is this where you would like public comments about the fence heights?
Yes.
Anything on the agenda, yes. And can you tell us where you live?
Yes, I'm on Tekin Street in Sagatuck.
Okay.
And I would like to address the fence heights for corner lots. I think the number one issue is safety, of course. And two intersecting streets. We're not going to propose a change to twenty feet in for any fence line. We want it to stay that twenty feet to allow for the safety of all individuals traveling that intersection. So that is not an issue. Safety's taken out of the picture. So the number two issue then would be for the property owner on a corner lot. And currently, it's, a corner lot is described as two front yards. And I think that that is the issue, that we need to make the side yard on a corner lot not a front yard, a designated front yard. And I'd like to explain what I mean by that because on a particular corner lot in my neighborhood, to fence in that side yard, it's a hundred and two feet long. And currently, you have to come in with your fence line on a six-foot fence, twenty feet. And that side yard is thirty-seven feet wide. So you would be losing seven, you'd have seventeen feet of your thirty-seven foot yard widthwise, all the way down a hundred and two feet. So that's two thousand and forty feet you would lose by being on a corner lot. You're still paying taxes and still caring for that. You just can't utilize it as you should be able to as a property owner. So I think we're not proposing either that we're trying to fence in a front yard. We still want, you know, that restriction to the, no further up than the front of the house. To the front of the house on a fence line. But we just want to address that it's a privacy concern for the homeowner. It's a security concern and safety for the children and the animals that they might have in their household. So since visibility and safety issues have been addressed and basically the concern is to let people that own corner lots fully use their property. So that's what I have tonight and thank you all for allowing me the time to speak. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't know that we have any other attendees tonight. Not, then we'll end the public comment section on agenda items and we'll go on to new business. The first piece of new business is a public hearing on fence heights. Cindy? You want to give us, should I open the hearing and then you give us the?
Usually I give my information first and then you open the public hearing.
Thank you.
I think if you look at this page on our memo, it shows the current location where you can have a six-foot fence on a corner lot. And what the proposed amendment would allow for a six-foot fence in, on a corner lot. It still does not allow a six-foot fence in the front yard, which in this case would be the yard to the east. And it would just allow the six-foot fence to continue in the side yard on a side street, defined as the longest dimension of the corner lot, the longest dimension along the street. We have just a few, and very few, that lots are perfectly square, so there is no longer side. We have always allowed people to choose which one they wanted to be their front yard. Obviously, if they had the orientation of their house facing one street or the other, they usually pick that one as their front yard. You can see the difference between the area that you can enclose with a privacy fence or an area that you can enclose for pets or children is quite a bit. And the intent is to make this more equitable with interior lots. Because in an interior lot, you get to enclose that much by right without any change to the ordinance. So it's just an equity thing. And if you look at the property to the top with the proposed, or where the current ordinance would allow you to put a six-foot fence, you can see that underneath those red letters, there's an extension of grass between the property line and the street. So instead of making it look like you're losing, you're still losing the part that's beyond the property line. But it makes it look like you're losing half the yard. Aaron, can you go to the next page? Please? Oh, that's all it shows. Okay, if you can get it to show the whole thing, that will show visually what it looks like you're losing. And this is a particular property. I think it's Jeanie's property and she supplied this photo. But that area between the red line and the street is, it feels like your lawn, it looks like your lawn, it acts like your lawn. But half of it's in the right of way. So you have to keep your fence that far back to and there's really no reason to do that. There is no downside to this. One thing that was brought up is whether or not, what if the house was oriented in a different fashion? And it was, the front yard was on the, or the front of the house was on the long side. Somebody could choose to put a six-foot fence in front of their house on the long side. But it would just be awkward and I really don't think anybody wanted to do that, would want to do that. But if they did, it really doesn't have any impact on on the safety or the yard area. So if anybody has any questions, they can ask me. Otherwise, we can go to the public hearing.
Any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, all right, well, I will then call a hearing to order and we've heard the summary by the zoning administrator. Do you have anything to add to that, Cindy?
Nope, I'm good.
I had a question, I guess. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Rich.
Okay, that's, that's good. I'm getting slightly confused. Is it just a matter, I'm starting to think it's just, it's not only just a matter of the height, six foot versus three, but, but the location in terms of the setback. I mean, you weren't really suggesting that these fences can go on a right-of-way per se. Street were right-of-way, were you?
No, they cannot go on the right-of-way. In fact, they have to stay one foot back from the right-of-way.
And normally on a corner lot, it would act like two front yards, so the front yard setback is twenty feet.
Uh huh.
Right?
Yep. So Aaron.
Are you still keeping the twenty feet? Are you doing something other than the, are you, twenty feet from the, can they go right up to the road right-of-way?
They have to stay one foot away, but Aaron, if you could go to the PowerPoint, which doesn't seem to have a page number on it, that has the title Current Allowable Height Limitations, I think it's the second or third PowerPoint.
Right.
That one, that one right there in the middle, if you could zoom in on that.
Okay, so.
That's our current, current allowable height limitations.
So we're not changing, we're not changing the placement, we're just changing the the allowable height?
Yep, if you can go to two, two slides down.
And Rich, the allowable height is only on that side yard.
Right. But yeah, my question is, I mean, and I guess I'm confusing myself, but we're not changing the placement, are we? We're just changing the allowable height.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, on the one side we are, the placement gets to go.
Yeah, the side yard, the side yard can, is, can be one foot from the public right-of-way.
Right, under the proposed change. Does that make sense? Which on the side they pick is the long side?
If you want to go back to, Aaron? Sorry. Am I on the right one now? The next one. That one. See the blue area to the north? You can have a fence there in that location, one foot from the property line, but the maximum height is three feet. So we're really just changing the height.
Right, I, for a little while there, I kind of thought you were changing the location as well, making it more you know, more closer, but.
No.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions about that part?
I think the public comment, as I understood her, will in some sense always be an issue. That, that, I mean, I live in a corner lot. I know exactly what she's talking about. I would never put up a fence on either side of that for that very reason. It would look like somebody just bought part of your property. But I think unfortunately that comes with, you know, having a reasonable fence ordinance. And I don't know that there's really any way around it. I mean, just as you see in the picture that's displayed there, you know, roughly looks to be thirty to forty percent of what once looked like that person's side yard now looks like, you know, you can grow weeds out there and you don't have to mow it because it's, you know, it's outside your fence. And it's just the nature of the subject matter, I'm afraid. It's going to look like you built, you put a fence up, given that it's got to come back from the, from the property line, which most people think, or at least daily deal with, I mean, I think my property line goes out to the street and I know damn well it doesn't. But I, you know, I maintain that grass, I maintain shrubs on what is city property and, and honestly, I want to leave it that way. So the only way to do that is to not put a fence up.
If there's a fence or not, whether it's a three-foot fence or a six-foot fence, the property owner is responsible for maintaining the grass in the right-of-way. So.
I get it, but I, you know what I'm saying, it's a visual thing as much as anything.
Yeah, but people put fences up because they have dogs and kids. So there's rational reasons why they would put a fence up.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, no, no, I'm not saying don't put up a fence. I'm just saying that when it comes to the location of that fence as it relates to property lines adjoining the public right-of-way, when you put up that fence, it's, it, it, there are, there are issues there. And, and I don't think anybody'd be arguing you can put a fence up on, on the right-of-way as, as Rich sort of referenced earlier. So if you put a fence up, it's going to look, you know, you're going to tell everybody exactly where that right-of-way is, pretty much.
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a question, or maybe it's, it, it's just not clarified in the picture. But like in the ordinance itself, it states that the, like the fence up where the corner is, you can't put a fence within twenty feet of the corner.
Aaron, the diagram is on page six of the packet.
Yeah. And it just may not be displaying in that PowerPoint, yeah. So no fence can go where that hashed hash line is, except a three-foot fence could go on the diagonal.
Actually, the three-foot fence could go in there because presumably when you're in a vehicle, you can see over a three-foot fence, but you can't see over.
Okay, so a three-foot could even be
Yep.
anywhere within
That area.
within that hashed area.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Is that the way, if, if I might, is that the way the current ordinance reads, that you can have a three-foot fence even within that hash marked area?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If you go to the top of the next page, Aaron, page seven, item number seven, addresses the question about whether or not you can put a fence in the right-of-way. The very top of page seven.
Yeah.
Right, I see it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I had a question. So on that point eight there that's in red, so is it, so is it, should it be for the, for a corner lot, the longest lot dimension?
Well, we usually talk about lot width.
Okay.
So it's the width of the lot dimension along the street line. I guess it doesn't, it's a semantics question. We could put the widest or longest.
Now, did you state that in fact, you know that there aren't any lots where, because I'm thinking of like the Sanford's, they live down the street from us. They, you know, they're they have a, you know, it's a rectangular house and their driveway is on Mason. And that I actually believe is, the front of their house is the longest.
Okay, so they're oriented to the side yard on the side street.
Yeah, so if they actually wanted to put a fence up, they would be putting a three-foot fence on their short side. And they could put, and they would be required, then, well, or they could put a six-foot fence, six-foot fence on the front side.
On the side yard on a side street, yes, they could if they so desired to put a six-foot fence there. I, I kind of think that.
They still, they still wouldn't be able to put it, the six-foot fence would stay twenty feet back because of the corner. So if they were on the front of their house and drop it down to three, they can.
Right.
That's what they're going to do, because that twenty-foot, that little, that triangle is still going to exist regardless of whether it's.
Yeah. So then they probably wouldn't then put a six-foot in front, because then they would have like a three-foot section and then they would jump to a six-foot. And yeah, it would just look weird. Okay.
Yeah, that three-foot, that, that triangle on the corner is pretty sacred spot that you don't want to have.
I was just wondering, like, why, like, do we even need, does eight even need to be there, but.
That just defines which one is which.
What does it add to it?
It tells you which one is your side yard on a side street and which one is your front yard. That's why it's there.
Any other questions or comments?
Cindy, when last we talked, there was, we were talking about a provision to be added for driveways to create a little better visibility. Have we addressed that?
We did not address that, however, it would be really simple to put the same triangle sacred area on a driveway as it does on the intersection.
You'd put two of them then?
Yes, if you had a driveway that passed through your side yard on a side street, you could have two triangles on either side of the driveway. That would be sacred to three feet.
I mean, do we think, do we think that would be a good idea? I think so, but.
I think it would be a good idea and I looked and I looked and I looked through all our GIS photography. I found none that had that situation, but that doesn't mean there aren't any. And we could add that quite simply.
Cindy, I just, knowing if I was a homeowner and if I was trying to fence in what I would call my side yard, but my garage was accessed through the side yard, to have a six feet and drop it down for twenty feet before the one side of the driveway to three feet, then be three feet, twenty feet on the other side of the driveway, then back up to six feet, is not aesthetically attractive. And I thought that we had talked about that if somebody was backing out, since they can't build into the right-of-way, and they still have one foot inside the right-of-way, that gives you enough distance that you'd be able to see them backing out.
Plus the, plus the right-of-way that's not street, that's grassy area, that's not paved. I think you'd have enough room to see vehicular traffic.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me.
It won't surprise you to know that I like my idea better.
What's your idea?
That, that we have such a reduction in height within a certain stated distance of a drive to allow for better visibility.
And that, now that's focused on the homeowner himself coming out of his driveway. It's not for traffic on the roads approaching
Right.
the corner, the intersection, is that right, or am I wrong?
I would say both, both the homeowner and the person who's driving along the street or the kid on the bike, the risk is pretty much equal for both parties.
Yeah, that's true.
Having visibility.
Yeah, I, especially if there's a sidewalk and you have a six-foot fence real close to the driveway, I can see how that, yeah, I can see that now.
And Cindy, did you say you're not aware of any?
I didn't find any, but we're also doing a lot of things right now and you'll find that there are gaps in my reports that didn't used to be there. But I'm trying real hard. And if you want to add that, I can put that together and if you want to, if you're thinking that you want to approve this with an amendment for driveways that pass through a side yard on a side street, I can add that right to number six on page six of the proposed ordinance.
It's a, it's kind of a quandary because I completely, I have actually arguably that sort of property with a side, a rear garage entry onto the street. It's, we never use it because the garage is used pretty much as a shed. But as I try and visualize this, and as I said earlier, I have no interest in a fence, period, but just to Steve's earlier point, it would look goofy as hell to have a six-foot fence that drops down, I guess steps down to go three feet to where the, a gate would be, which I assume the gate would only be allowed at three feet as well. And then back up on the other side of the gate to the, to the, and then at that height back to the end of the property line on that, on that line. It truly would look goofy. I mean, it would. it would.
It would probably be the more conservative thing to add that to number six on page six, to add the triangle, to make a sacred spot next to a driveway. And, um, you know, ordinances are living, growing things, and if some, if somebody really had a problem with it, they could take it to zoning board of appeals, or they could come back to the planning commission and say, look, I understand why you did this, but it's not working for my family.
I, I, I can see the point of maybe it not being very practical or aesthetically pleasing, I can grant you that. So, I mean, I'm not stuck on it, it's just a concern.
I get it, and I also get the safety aspect, I mean, nobody's arguing on the front corner, because those make sense for safety, from a safety standpoint. So, I don't know, if, if we're talking about a tenth of a percent of the properties in town, flip a coin.
I guess my only thought on, on the sacred space on the driveways is that, you know, the speed a person backs out of their driveway is, is by nature slow, and you're usually looking both ways, especially if there is sidewalk that crosses that space. Or even if you're just backing up into traffic, you know, on the, on the road that you live on. I, I, I guess I'm questioning how much we need to build in that extra safety barrier when it's already a very slow, and people are already very trained to back out carefully and look as they're backing out onto the road that they get on, so, I don't know, I think I'm less inclined to do that. It just feels, it feels cumbersome as a, as a restriction. And aesthetically, I think it, it'd kind of be a dead, if, if it were my home, but-
Yeah, I, I'm-
I agree.
Stephanie, and, I mean, the other thing is, I think a lot of bicyclists even are very conscientious about, you know, approaching driveways, I mean, I, I, I know I do, when, when I ride my bike, I'm always paying attention to intersections and driveways, et cetera. It just, yeah, it feels like overkill.
I can remember doing that when I was a kid, and bicycles are very maneuverable, they can turn on a dime.
And I know, I mean, a lot of car, you know, older cars don't have backup cameras, but most of it is standard now, where there's backup cameras and-
Well, Cindy, what should we do?
One other thing I think about trying to, you know, not add it, I would say not to put it in, because there are driveways in this town, as well as many other towns, where somebody has run a hedge all along the driveway out to their property line or trees, and it's the same thing, you can't see them backing up until they're actually in the public right of way. So why would the fence be any different than being able to run your hedges or trees?
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Yeah.
So Stephanie, you were asking what we should do next, we should ask if there anybody wants to speak to the public hearing?
Yeah, that's true, I thought we should figure that out, are there, anybody, is, does, does anyone want to speak again at the public hearing before I close it out?
Yes, can you see it's okay, this is Jeannie, and, and Jeannie's here as well, uh, Jeannie spoke a little bit earlier. Is there any way you could bring up that photo again with the red line down the? Yeah, that's-
That is Erin, page-
Okay, perfect, all right.
It's not muted, kind of delay.
Yeah, I, yeah, excellent, thank you very much. So what, what we were hoping to demonstrate in this is you can see the house a little bit on the right-hand side. From the house to the line is seventeen feet. From the house to the property line, which is right about where that tree is, maybe on the other side of it, is thirty-seven feet. And so basically what's happening is by having to move in twenty, we would like to put a twenty, a six-foot fence in, by having to move in that twenty feet, we're losing all of that, that property, all that property right there. We can currently take a three-foot fence and put it on the property line, which is about where that tree is, which still leaves all of that city right of way, so we're not trying to do anything with the city right of way, we just would like to put a six-foot fence, one foot in from the property line, so that we don't lose that twenty feet of, of property there. And that six-foot fence would stop at the, the front of the house, and the corner would, would still maintain the integrity and the safety that is the issue with the corner lot. So you would still be able to have the visibility, the six-foot fence would not impact that at all. The only thing that the six-foot fence would allow would be for that increased safety and security and privacy for the property owner to be able to, uh, to take care of their, their pets, their children, and, and have some privacy on the, on the corner there. So, um, it sounded like things got a little bit confusing there, but basically we would like to put a six-foot fence on the property line, which is right about where the, one foot off the property line, which is about where the tree is, um, as opposed to bringing it in twenty feet, which is where this red line is on the, on the property. Jeannie, did you have anything else?
Yes, I think it got confusing with maybe someone thinking that we were interested in the right of way or something on the left side of that little tree. That little tree is sitting on our property line, and currently the fence regulations are one foot off of that property line. So you can see, this picture was just showing you that we're losing over half of our yard to the current regulation. So, uh, without, this has nothing to do with the right of way outside of that tree, that's not yard we're even discussing or talking about or own. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you ladies, I appreciate your coming tonight and sharing with us. So if there's no more public comments, I'll close this hearing, and we will go into discussion. Or discussion. So what are we thinking? I, I, I personally think we have to decide what, what we want to do on that triangle on either side of the driveway, if there's an appetite to add an amendment. If not, it seemed like we had consensus to accept the ordinance as it's written here. Am I right that that's kind of where we're at, Dan?
Yes. And, and what was just discussed by the, the two ladies commenting. I, is it, first, is it accurate, so it's probably a question for Cindy, that a three-foot fence would be allowed right now, one foot in from the property line on that picture?
That is correct, but it would be limited to three feet in height and not provide privacy or confinement for big pets.
And, and that's changing, and it being pushed back because? Why?
Because there's no reason not to, and it's been requested, and this is not my first request, but it's been requested by Kate McPollan, our former vice chair, who understands our zoning ordinance probably as well or better than I do.
And, and Kate wants it moved?
Yes.
Seven, whatever it is, twenty feet back from the property line?
She wants it moved so you can build your six-foot fence in the side yard on the side street.
But only if it's twenty feet back from the property?
Only if it's one foot back from the property line.
Well-
It would be treated like a side yard.
Yeah, treated exactly like a side yard on an interior lot.
So let me go back to the photograph, because I'm confused.
Erin, can you go to, um, the second page of the memo, which is page three? Poor Erin, I boss her around all the time.
It's fine.
And zoom in really close on those two photos, there you go. The top photo is where a six-foot fence is allowed under our current ordinance. And the bottom photo is where a six-foot fence would be allowed under the proposed. And you can see there's adequate grassy area between the fence and the pavement of the street.
I'm trying to relate that to the photograph, the actual property photograph with the red line on it.
That photograph of the red line is the first one, the first of these two photos, the top one. Keep going, keep going, there. In addition to the grassy area between the street and the property line, they're also limited from putting a six-foot fence from the property line, twenty feet back from the property line. And there's, you know, I keep saying there's no downside, but there really is no downside to this. It just allows the, um, property owner to enclose that area just as you would if you were in an interior lot.
So, again, I'm sorry to be thick on this, but, so a- as relates to the two ladies who commented, the proposal would completely satisfy them, correct?
Yes, it would completely satisfy them, what their needs are, and, and I talked it over extensively with Kate. Stephanie came in and talked to me about it as well, so we were on the same page. And in the future, especially when I don't have time to make a good packet, please, anytime you don't understand something, call me and come in, and we can go over it. But there's no downside to this, this is, this is good planning, and I really don't have any issues with it.
Cindy, you took a picture at the top, in the bird's eye view at the bottom. For my purposes of making sure I'm tracking, which one of those two shots is the present ordinance written for?
The top one is the current ordinance, the bottom one is the proposed ordinance.
Shows the six-foot fence all the way around this house.
Yep.
It's the red line.
Yep.
All right.
Does anyone else have questions? No, okay. All right, well, I think we are ready to vote, are we not? Is there any other steps?
I believe so.
Entertain a motion.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we ex- accept the ordinance, um, and ordinance to amend title fifteen, chapter one fifty-four, section one fifty-four point one four-three of the code of the city of Sagatuck, um, as outlined in the packet.
You have a second?
I second it.
Roll call. I'm sorry, was that a second by Manns?
Yeah, second by Manns, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Casper?
Yes.
Manns?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Vlacity?
Motion carries. And we'll try to go on to the next item, and again, the first one, I think is pretty easy. Erin, that's on the first page of our attachment that we added today. This is what we talked about, houses in the flood plain. If a house is destroyed by fire, a non-conforming house is destroyed by fire and burned to the ground, it can be rebuilt in the same location. If it's threatened by flood, it, and they want to lift it up and put a new foundation underneath, it has to be moved to be in conformance with the zoning ordinance, which sometimes is impossible, but sometimes you could make it a little better. It is the goal of the city and of FEMA to get houses out of the flood plain. The only, the really confusing part about this is there's a, a defined flood plain map that shows which houses are in the flood hazard area, shows where the property in the flood hazard area is. But they're only in the flood hazard area if they're below five eighty-five feet above sea level. If you lift it up beyond five eighty-five sea level, you are considered to have been, have, to have been removed from the flood plain. So, um, keep going till you get to the red line part.
I've got bad news, this version does not have it.
Does not have the red line?
Let me see if I can get to the website yet.
Okay, yeah, you're in the office, so you can maybe find it. What, what the ordinance proposes is if you're, if your home or your structure, because there are other structures besides homes, are threatened by flood, then you have the same rights as anybody whose house burned flat to the ground, to rebuild in that location. It does put a few restrictions on it, and it defines what threatened by flood means. Threatened by flood means you're in the special flood hazard area, and your first floor elevation is below the flood plain plus one foot, which is what's required for new construction. Flood plain, base flood elevation plus one foot. Then you can, then you're considered to be threatened by flood. But if you lift it, you're limited to lifting it three feet above the base flood elevation. This is not something that we're trying to get you to add an extra story. You know, you don't want to come and say, oh, I'm in the flood plain, my house is really low and it's gonna get wet, and I want to lift it fifteen feet. No, that's not what this is intended to do. It's intended to protect properties that are threatened by flood because they're below the flood elevation, the base flood elevation, and, um, they're not to be lifted more than three feet above the base flood elevation. New construction requires, requires one foot above the BFE, so that's, that's really the intent. That will, that will get us extra points in our community safety ratings, and it will meet the requirements of the ISO and FEMA.
Cindy, can we just give them a quick recap of the house that brought us to this issue? And what the problem was, so they can kind of understand why this is coming up and, and why we want to seek a remedy?
Sure, there's properties all along the waterfront that were built in the eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds, before there was zoning, and before there was building codes, and before there was FEMA flood plain regulations. And we did have a house that was threatened by floodwater, and the water was creeping up into the yard further and further. The house was below the five eighty-four flood plain elevation, so it was in the flood plain. The property owners wanted to lift it up out of the flood plain, protect the prop, to protect the structure, protect the property, maintain the value, and, um, protect it from damage. And because it was non-conforming, and I think they only wanted to lift it two feet, you remember that, Stephanie? I think it was two feet.
I remember.
To just pu, just bring it out of the flood plain. Flood plain elevation is a horizontal measurement, it's not a setback or a dimensional issue, it's, it's a horizontal number that the first floor is elevated. And, um, there was some strong thought that if the house was to be lifted, it had to be brought into conformance with the zoning ordinance. It doesn't seem realistic or fair that your house could burn to the ground, but you, and then you could build it back in the exact same spot. But if you wanted to protect your house, you had to move it. It just doesn't seem equitable. So that's where, kind of where it came from, do you want to add anything, Stop?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, the, the sticking point was that once they moved the house up, there was, like Cindy said, strong thought that once they're lifting it off of the, uh, the foundation, there was, um, some line of thinking that says whatever can be reasonable to bring a house into conformity on either a side setback or a front setback or whatever, that the ZVA should, should seek that in its ruling. And so it, it caused some confusion and, uh, so- so Cindy's, Cindy's point is there probably should be some parity there between homes that are in a flood plain and just need to be lifted with homes and it was non-conforming, a non-conforming home in the flood plain to, to just allow it to be lifted without having to be brought into conformity, the same way we allow a house that burns down. It can still be burnt, built, rebuilt in the same exact non-conforming position based on our ordinance. So we're trying to bring parity there, especially with something urgent like water encroaching into the house. Does that make sense to everybody?
So what you're talking about is allowing both of your examples, the burning house and the flooded house, to maintain their footprint as where it was before the event.
Yes.
And the question then is how much height they are allowed to raise this house? The flood plain? Is that the question?
If the question is how much height you're allowed to raise it to, it would be, what I've proposed here is three feet above the base flood elevation as determined by FEMA. FEMA determines the base flood elevation and their flood insurance rate maps. And if you, if you, if you're going to build a new house, you have to have it at least one foot above. But what I'm proposing here is some people out of an abundance of caution want it more than one foot above. And three feet seem to be reasonable. We could pick a different number. We could pick one, we could pick two.
Is three feet, I don't see three feet in the red line.
Well, is Erin still looking for the red line?
I am wondering if I have the right documents.
I have a red line in front of me.
You have the red line in front of you?
I have a red line. It does, it's, it's on, in section C there, it says shall not be raised more than three feet above the BFE.
My red line only has section A.
I emailed the same document to everybody.
Cindy, is this the right document or am I in the wrong document?
No, that's the right one. That's the right document.
Wait, wait, you just passed it. Keep going. Right, it's the big red, the big paragraph right there, okay, C, that.
Thank you, sorry.
See, the last sentence, in addition, a structure that is threatened by flood shall not be raised more than three feet above the BFE.
Yep.
And Cindy, you're.
We don't want them to raise it eight feet above the BFE and gain another story and that's not the intent. The intent is to protect it.
It also block, block views from behind.
Yep, exactly.
And then if you raise it, there's a height at which if you allow them to go up wherever they want, it gets out of scale with the houses or the buildings around it.
Exactly.
Okay.
And you don't want them to go over the maximum height limitation, but I can give you one example of one that might go over the height limitation. And that would be a building that's been having severe flooding for the past two years and that's Coral Gables. If they lift that house up out of the flood plain, it is going to violate the height restrictions. And there's another, there's some other ones that are along that street that will not violate the height limitations. But that one, if they want to lift it, would definitely violate the height limitation. And with, you know, you want to think carefully about those. That's the only one I can think of that's high and in the special flood hazard area.
Yeah, I, I have a question there in that section C, it says that the lo, lowest floor, if the lowest floor level is less than one foot above the does the lowest floor include like a basement?
Yes.
Okay. So if someone's basement is flooding, they
and they're in the special.
They met, they were in the flood zone. They wouldn't be able to raise, okay.
By the FEMA map, yeah.
Yeah, by the, yep.
And Cindy, that flood plain special risk area or whatever is basically both sides all along the river?
It depends. It kind of fluctuates in and out and there's some properties that by using fill have removed their properties from the flood plain. Because the flood plain, again, is the horizontal measurement. It's not, here's the line along the street and that's where it is. In fact, the new house that's across from the SCA, that property was in the special flood hazard area, but because of fill, they filled in with sand and so on. They were able to get a letter of map amendment from FEMA that now it's out of the flood plain.
Is that the same for the one farther down there next to the condos on where they're messing with the foundation? It's been going up for like four years.
The one that's, oh, an eight forty, eight forty-five lake, the one next to, um.
Yeah, the one next to the.
Across from the Hotel Sagatuck.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, that was not in the flood plain, but it was near the flood plain, so they're going to have to get an elevation certificate from a surveyor before they can continue doing and framing. Showing that it's 585 or more above sea level.
And the surveyor can determine that.
The surveyor does a flood elevation certificate that gets submitted to FEMA.
I see. Well, they must.
And believe me, they are bossy.
There's still framing going up on that site right now.
Yeah, I know there is. I, they may have already submitted their elevation certificate to our building inspector, but I just haven't seen it yet.
Let me see.
Any other questions? This, is the, is the concept clear to you? What we're trying to do here?
Yeah, it makes sense.
It was kind of a, it was a little bit of a sticking point. I really struggled with it personally. I was on the ZVA as an alternate on that ruling and we really got stuck with the idea that once something comes off its foundation, we thought the guiding principle should be to, in, in what is a reasonable request to, to fix any non-conformities while it's already off of its foundation. But Cindy is, is framing it in a different way and making it more comparable to other things that would cause you to have to, you know, fix your house and you wouldn't have conformity. So I think she's saying that's the better comparison than fixing conformities just because you're trying to get your house out of the flood plain.
Other jurisdictions?
This is very limited because you, you have to meet the requirement that you're in that flood plain and that your lowest floor is less than one foot above it, so.
And you have to be non-conforming. You know, already you have to be.
Go ahead, Mike. What'd you say, Mike?
No, what you're saying is that you already have to be a non-conforming structure. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right.
Is, is Coral Gables non-conforming?
Yes.
Now, would they have to go before the ZVA if they wanted to lift up and they were looking for a height variance?
In the, in the current ordinance, yes. In the proposed, no.
So they could lift three feet and go above the height limitations we have over there and they wouldn't need, they would be, they could, they could violate the height variance because they were lifting themselves out of the flood.
Right, because if they burn down, they could do that as well and they would have to meet the, the flood plain elevate, the flood plain issues. So it's really no different. It's just, we, I, I think it's inappropriate to put obstacles in the way of people who do want to do the right thing and get out of the flood plain. And it will improve our community safety rating score, which is how we pay insurance on, on property in the flood plain. And I just think it's, personally, I just think it's the right thing to do.
Well, you, you're saying, from your point of view, it's an issue of equity.
Yes.
Okay. Stephanie, are you entertaining a motion?
Are we done with discussion? Does anyone have anything else they want to add or question? All right, well, yes, we could entertain a motion, right? Cindy, you've written it after getting it back from the.
Finally, yeah.
Is it the one that's listed as possible motion?
Uh, yes, I do believe it is in the very last page of the PowerPoint, Erin.
Yes. All righty, I'll make a motion to approve amendments. Section 154.174 of the Sagatuck City Ordinance to treat non-conforming flood threatened properties in the same manner as non-conforming properties damaged by wind or fire or other calamity.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mike, seconded.
Was, was this a public hearing?
Yes, I'm sorry, it was a public hearing. Did we ever open it or, we don't have anybody on except Jeannie and Jamie for the fence.
Well, you should still open and close.
You should still open and close it.
Well, let's, uh, let's commence our public hearing on the non-conforming structures and invite anyone that's with us to speak for or against the proposal. Do you have anybody? Okay, hearing, nobody wanting to speak, we will close this portion of our meeting. Take our vote now.
Need to restate the motion or no?
You want us to restate, Cindy?
It would be a good idea.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve amendments to section 154.174 of the Sagatuck City Ordinance to treat non-conforming flood threatened properties in the same manner as non-conforming properties damaged by wind or fire or other calamity. Second.
Erin, roll call. Fox?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yep.
Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Mance?
Yes.
And Vlacity.
All right, moving on, any old business, Cindy?
We talked last meeting about accessory structures being closer than seven and 10 feet to the property line and I wanted to take a stab at that and see what we could do. I sent it to the attorney's office. They didn't get it back to me right away. They got it back to me now, but it was kind of too late for me to write a memo or something else. So I would at this time say that we should just table that item until the next item and I can give a new notice out to the public for that. On a fifty-five, a 50-foot lot width, if you have to put your shed, your garden shed, 10 feet or seven feet away from the property line, you're putting it pretty much in the middle of your backyard where you might want to have something else, like a patio or a fire pit or something like that. And I, I still want to look at it a little bit more. It is included in the packet of the information that was returned from the attorney's office. But I didn't get to spend as much time on it as I wanted to. The way that I proposed it would be just in the R1 Community Residential Zone District where our small lots are located, not out in along Park Street where the lots are large. There's no need to, to crowd the property line there.
Cindy, in the document from the attorney's, at least on what I'm looking at, there's no redlining or indication of what's new. Is it all new?
No, you're probably looking at the clean copy, but you have to look at the red line. Erin, can you go to the red line for accessory structures? It's right after the flood plain stuff in the same document.
Sorry, so it's in right after the PowerPoint?
Yep, right after the PowerPoint. Uh, this is the clean copy. We, we want the red line copy. But you don't have to, right, remember when you were looking at the flood plain stuff and we had that paragraph? It should be right after that in the same document.
Oh, that was the one I had to pull up from email. I'm sorry.
Yep. This is, I think this is it. There it is, number 18.
Okay, because I don't have that.
I'm wondering, Cindy.
Item number 18. You passed it, I think. Number, item number eight, or paragraph number 18.
Am I going the wrong way?
18, I think. You're going the wrong way. Go.
Right there, right there it is.
There.
Sorry, the delay is kind of, it's on my end, Anthony's end, I think. Just to add to the fun of the technical difficulties of this meeting.
You're doing fine.
So this is for encroachments inside and rear yards in the R1 Community Residential Zone District, accessory buildings and structures in the side or rear yard. I can't see it without my magnifying glasses.
Provided that they are no closer than two feet from any side or rear, rear yard lot line and completely, and comply with all applicable building code requirements.
Yeah, that's a really common zoning ordinance exception for, for encroaching into a side or rear yard in downtown areas. And that's why I limited it to the R1 Community Residential where all our smaller lots are. But if you, if you think that's really cool, you could make a motion to adopt it. Otherwise, I recommend counsel to adopt it or we could table it to the next meeting.
You don't have to public hearing this?
It is a public hearing.
This is?
Yes. Pardon?
You didn't do it for that, but topic though, did we? You did fences and non-con, is this a non-conforming structure?
No, this is for a new construction of a shed or a accessory building in the R1 Zone District.
Doesn't that have to be a separate public hearing that you give public notice to?
Yes, and that's, and I did not include it on the agenda because I did not think I would get it back from the attorney, so. We can, we can do it next week.
Make a motion that we table this. We probably need to.
Because I didn't write a memo. You don't know what I'm talking about, so.
All right, well, somebody want to make a motion to table?
Yeah. Yeah, to table the changes for accessory buildings in section 154.174 of the Code of the City of Sagatuck for the next meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
You need to vote on that?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Mance?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Vlacity?
Got all the old business then, Cindy?
Yep.
Moving on, do we have any communication?
There are none.
No reports of officers or committees?
None.
Okay, and last, we will go to public comments on any, any item. So is there anyone in the audience still with us that wants to comment? Okay, I don't think there are, so we'll move on and to take a motion to adjourn.
So I move.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
I was Mike.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, you're with me here. Okay, Crawford?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Man?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Vlacity?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for hanging in there, Erin, with all the.
And thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, guys. This, we were afraid, but it worked out. We did it. Yay.
It was nice of our website to go down at the same time they're replacing our, our server in-house. That just added to the fun of it.
All right, everybody. Good to see you all again. Stay well.
Bye bye. Okay, thanks.
Have a good evening, weekend.